Good afternoon Wyoming. Oh my goodness, this is so exciting. I believe this is maybe our seventh event in our March Madness Culture Change Coalition Conference that's happening this entire month. Thank you so much for joining me. My name is Carmen Bowman. It's really been my honor to get to work with you all in Wyoming and I'd love to encourage every single person listening. You know, because you're a state with a small number of nursing homes, if anyone could pull off doing it different, it would be you guys. And so I really want to encourage you to learn all you can and consider coming more often. There's a whole bunch more happening this month. And I've got, I've got a note. Is everyone else carrying another meeting? I'm not. I hope nobody else is. Can you hear me everybody? Can you maybe verify? That'd be great, just in case there's a problem. This is our special session for dining teams. And I'm guessing many of you represent dining. Thank you Max. But I know that we're also trying to just broaden all of us and learn all we can. So I'm impressed that many of you are on the line who don't necessarily represent dining. Thanks. So a lot of people say they can hear me. Thanks so much. So here we go. We get to think about culture change and dining in this hour together. And I do apologize, I always have so much to share. So I'm going to go fairly fast to get through it all. So we can talk more and I can hopefully answer some questions. And what I love doing everyone is to show both regulation and innovation basically in everything. Because most people don't realize that regs support culture change very strongly. We've been quoting regs, our whole movement and our movement is going on 30 years old, 30 years now. So part of, part of what I do is ground people in regulation. You all should know the regulations well. You are being held accountable to them. Your nursing home says, "We will meet all these many regulations." And surveyors come in and hold you to them and you don't know what, you know, unless you know what they are. So today we'll look at some, some regs that retain, some new to dining compared to the other sessions that I've done. But some of the same information I'm letting be in each session. I hope that makes sense. So some of it you've already heard, those of you that have been here before. But some of it is new and here's something new. So I want to show you a change in language that even CMS made with these new regulations. And by the way, the new regulations are already six years old. They came out in 2016. But look at this. CMS purposely chose to stop using the term dietary services. And instead they refer to food and nutrition services. And that's kind of a big win for language if you think about it. No offense to any dietary managers or dietary departments. But if you think about it, the word dietary is very institutional, you know? Even hospitals don't use it so much anymore. So you'll hear me refer to the dining team. That's just my lingo. It just feels better. It's really what you are, the dining team. If you happen to have a chef in the kitchen guys, then I think technically you are culinary services. And maybe you are even without a chef. I don't know. I'm not the expert on dining language. But I just want you to hear that you don't have to be stuck in the old language. You don't have to keep using dietary. And it really changes things when you, when you stop using institutional words. By the way, in our movement, we don't use department. That's very institutional. The activities department. You know, the dietary department. I know we're used to it, but it doesn't reflect normal life. So a nice word that a lot of people are moving towards is the word team. That's a good word, don't you think? And see, there's power in language. And so if you say team, you just reminded everybody with that one word. That's what we're supposed to be. It's like proactive. It helps create what we want, right? But every time we say department, it fades away into the background and it just keeps kind of perpetuating the institutional model. So if you want to get rid of the institutional model, one way to do it is to change your own language personally, but also to teach as you go. Some of you were with us on Tuesday. Suzanne Queering gave the great point to flood your teammates with best practice. Flood them with information. Get these, get this handout and make copies for everybody, whether they work in dining or not. That's one thing I learned too in the culture change movement, that whatever, whatever training is out there regarding changing culture, go get it and share it with everyone, you know? If it's about individualizing bathing, the message is individualizing. So everyone can benefit even if they never give someone the pass. Okay, so what do you suggest as a title? I'm a certified dietary manager. Please suggest as a title. Well, I'd love to hear what some of you think, what some of you have heard as other titles. To be honest, instead of like director, I see a lot of people moving toward the word lead. I'm the, maybe the dining services team lead. I know that's wordy, but, but notice it's got words that create a different culture. And let's see, oh, I know, if you watch the recording of last Tuesday on Person Directed Dining, she gave some other examples of new titles that people are using. Another more common title everyone is coordinator. To be honest, you know, people don't really direct per se, but they do coordinate a lot, you know, an activities coordinator. So I've seen coordinator and I've seen lead as some examples. So thanks for asking already. By the way, the handout is uploaded in the chat box. If you can download it, if you cannot, let me know. Email me. My email's all over the front in the beginning of this presentation. I'll be happy to send it to you. So culture change is, what I think of is still the answer. See, culture change has been around for almost three decades now. And if you've heard about it, you know, that's great, but notice it has not flooded our field. And so please don't dismiss it as old or outdated because it is not. It's still the answer I'm going to show you. But I'm also learning that a lot of you have never heard about it. And that shows you that our movement never really took off like it could. And when we say culture change, what we mean is changing institutional culture. Believe it or not, some people think we're talking about ethnicity or, you know, diversity, welcoming everyone. That's a different thing. This is changing that institutional culture that nobody really wants. This is why people don't want to live in a nursing home basically. And oftentimes why people don't want to work there. So guess what everyone? Culture change is still the answer and you will find all the outcomes you're looking for. I have a list coming up. Another way to think of culture change is this beautiful quote from a leader in our movement. "No longer are the needs of the institution going to come before the needs of the individual." Man, oh man, if you just stopped listening right now and made that a focus, everything would change, wouldn't it? So no longer are the needs of the institution going to come first. And in your culture that you represent, what comes first? The institution or the individuals who live there? Another way to perhaps think of all this, a friend of mine kind of talks in this language that, he talks in the language of moving the pendulum. So at the very least, day to day, just keep moving away from institution. And you've all probably heard the term home-like. It's even in the regulations. It's a, it's good. It is meant well, right? But if you think about it, do you want to live somewhere that is home-like? Or would you rather live where it is home? And, and when we say home, we mean it. So you can start to change language and that's good. But when you think of true home, guess what? That means the people who live there are deciding on what's going to go on the walls. The people who live there are deciding who can work there. And I'm speaking of things that go on and change cultures. The people who live there help make decisions about budget. Isn't that amazing? That's what your home could, you know, could do someday. So look at these photos. I haven't shown these yet. Look at this. What's the difference everyone? So what I'd love to encourage you is to just allow your mind to think about what is normal and what is real life. Isn't that sad that I, I use the term real life compared to institutional life? A lot of weird things take place in an institution and yet people live there and that is their home. And I, I kind of have to ask, why did we let this happen? We all kind of were blindsided, all of us. I've walked around as a surveyor, watching, no choice, no choice, no choice. But I never sided it because it was normal to not have any choice, you know? So anyway, how do you like this photo? That is a campfire on the backside of the nursing home in, in a, in a small town in Colorado. Isn't that cool? So that's our goal everybody, real life for people, real life. So all the outcomes we want, you know, when you, when you give normal, real life to people, they want to live there. Your, your nursing home is full. You all know that's when the nursing home makes money. That goes, that seems to go well for everybody, right? So let's just get that out of the way. Also, when you, let's say, serve people the food they want to eat and they eat it, you end up saving money. You don't waste money by making food people don't want to eat. I'm going to show you more about that. Just not waking up residents in the morning, not going through those motions of waking someone up actually is an example of saving time. And saving any staff time is an example of saving money, right? What I've learned everyone is when you go with the people who live there, go with their routines, with their preferences, with their circadian rhythm, it ends up being more efficient and better for everyone. And, and we also use the language of redesign work. So everyone's eventually going to get up out of bed every morning, right? And so some people wake up early, you know who you are. And some people wake up really late and everyone else in between. And so notice what I'm saying, everyone will eventually be helped to get dressed. And so it's redesigned. You're still going to do the same work, but you're going to do it according to the individual's schedules. And people do this all over the country. If they can do it, you can do it. I'm going to talk more about real foods in a moment because we're focusing on dining and eating. And when you serve people real food that they love to eat, guess what? That's also an example of saving money, particularly on the supplements. People lose weight in this, in this, you know, in this living environment. And we tend to jump to the supplements thinking that's what we're supposed to do. But smarter people than me have realized that's a waste of money. Most people don't drink the whole supplement. You're pouring lots of money down the drain, I would guess. That's what I've heard in most every nursing home. But when you give people food they love, like how many of you would rather have a malt than a supplement? Or a smoothie than a supplement? Or an ice cream shake than a supplement? And at the end of my malt, I often hear this. How about you? But you often don't hear that at the end of insure. It's a really fun example. You could have fun with that. Talk about real foods versus fake foods. What do people really miss? What do they really want? Get creative, go have fun. Have a malt day, have an ice cream shake day, have a smoothie day, you know? Find out, experiment. Oh my goodness. And guess what? You'll actually save money. And then of course, when people want to work in this kind of a situation and this kind of a culture, you know? When people stay, there's a picture of saving money and not spending it on all that turnover or how about on all that agency staff? So all the outcomes are there. We tend to have better satisfaction, fewer problems, fewer calls to the ombudsman, to the health department, even internally, fewer grievances. And we're trying to not use that word by the way, you know, fewer problems for people. Part of culture change is recognizing that old people don't want to just be with old people. I know I won't. I love old people. How about you? But when I'm old, I'm not going to want to only be with old people. Whoever thought of that? I kind of want their name. How about you? And so, you know, there's so much to say, but part of our movement is to bring people of all ages into that nursing home, the community. Not just children, but of course children. And my daughter and I got to be a part of a grant that did a youth day camp. That's something we could do in Wyoming too everybody. And my daughter's 12 in that picture. She turned 17 this week. And she got to know Maya who has since passed away there. And I want you to see what Maya said at our end celebratory event. "The children brought my happiness back. My depression is gone and I stopped my medication today." Do you realize that's what children can do? And if you spend your, think of how you spend your time everyone. If you spent a little time on finding more people to come be with the people who live where you work of all ages. It has that potential, you know? That's what brings life to people's lives. We also see improved clinical outcomes, right? When you eat what you want, when you want. You're healthier, your nutrition's better. When we work to not interrupt sleep, don't wake people up. I'll talk about it more. You know, you're not having the battle to wake someone. You don't have to tell people that, hey, here's a great job, you know? You have to wake people up who don't want to wake up, you know? That's something to talk about everyone. So when people get better sleep, wow, I love that subject. You know, we call ourselves healthcare and yet we wake people up every morning pretty much and during the night. And it's not necessary. There's many ways to work with the person and not have to wake them so much. To give people back the decision-making is a very healthy thing. To know people's preferences and to actually be able to honor them. Wow, how would you feel if you loved Captain Crunch and you got it for breakfast? Living in the nursing home, right? I think that'd be talk of the town, don't you? Guess what? They got my mom at the nursing home. So we're trying to work with people, not against. And then when people feel loved on and cared about and as an individual, you know, they are less depressed, less anxious, less upset. Their quality of life is better. Physical health, better. And we're going to touch on highest practicable level of wellbeing is better. And then guess what? Of course, another outcome that's better is better regulatory compliance. I'm going to show you. And guess what? Remember this everyone? They're just minimal regs. Culture change helps you to not only meet the regs, but to go beyond them. So speaking of regs, here we go. CMS has a long list of definitions. This is just one I want to show you. Look at how they define person-centered care. "It means to focus on the resident as the locus of control and support the resident in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives." Isn't that ironic? That's what people want. And that's the definition of person-centered care apparently. So that's what should be going on in every nursing home in America. Why is there a problem, right? Why is there a disconnect? So I would encourage you all to cut that out, to make copies, pass it around. You know, make sure everyone has their own, you know? Make it decor in the building. This is powerful. This is another way of saying, "No longer are the needs of the institution going to come before the needs of the individuals." And it's required. You know, sometimes a good reg can, can guide you. Let it, let it guide you. Let it force you to do things you've been wanting to do. By the way, the terminology person-centered care was outdated. The minute that CMS actually printed this in 2016, the culture change movement had already moved on to person-directed care. And you know, you might think there's not really a difference and I don't mean to be picky, but notice that centered is one thing and it's good, but directed by the person is even better. So I would encourage you to let that be the goal. So we talk a lot about person-directed and I'm going to talk about that word care here in a minute. Look at this everyone. This is quite interesting. When someone has to move out of their home, oftentimes they move into what's called independent, what, what's it called? Independent living. And then maybe they need more assistance and what's it called? Ready? Assisted living. Cool. And then they need more what? Care and what's it called? Long-term care. Everyone, everyone, I hope you can hear me. Look at this. Where did the living go? I really think there's something to that everyone. That's the power of language right there. That's the power of words. See, when we say long-term care and person-centered care, all we're talking about is care. And guess what? We're missing life and living. So I challenge all of you, no matter what your job, no matter what your discipline, join us in talking about the life that these people are living. More than the care that they're receiving and the care that you're giving. It helps us to just up a notch, right? Everything up a notch. Let's do this. Person-centered care, person-directed care, resident-directed care. What's missing again? The life and the living. So you could also consider kind of tweaking your own words to talk about resident-directed life, resident-directed living. Another neat way to say it is self-directed. You are self-directing your life right now and so am I. And aren't you going to want to do that your whole life? I know I am. So it's another neat way to perhaps say it. Back to the regs. There's some strong resident rights. I hope you all know this. But first of all, we'll take a look at this beautiful sentence. By the way, I don't say that word up there that starts with an F. It may sound silly, but in the culture change movement, we call that the F-word. And I don't say the F-word. I don't say the other one either. I really don't like it. And so you could have fun with that. See, I want you all to think about this. What is a facility really? And someone, someone who likes to maybe multitask, you could look it up. What's the definition of, what is the? I'm trying to mute everyone. Hey everybody, if you're not muted, could you double check? Sometimes we're hearing stuff. Thank you. What is a facility really? Okay, what is a facility? If you look it up, you will not see any synonym that says anything about home. It's usually like a building, right? I think of a school. A school is a facility. Yep. You know why? Interestingly enough, because nobody lives there. We don't typically call buildings where people live, facilities. Isn't that odd? So you don't have to. The culture change movement doesn't. If you hang out with culture change folks, you'll never hear that word. So please know you don't have to use words you don't want to, even though they might be everywhere. They're in the regs. They're in your policy, but you don't have to. And so again, there's power in words. When you start talking about this home or what home did you just come from? Or, you know, we've just referred to this home or their home. Or you can use the word community. One nursing home by itself truly is a community. You know, some people live there, some people work there, a lot of people come and go from there. It's a community that you could use that word. Oftentimes we do refer to the community. And then another way to avoid the word facility is simply to call it by the name that it is, right? Sage Living in Jackson, Wyoming. It used to be St. John's. I believe it's changed. Or it's in addition, Michelle, you'll have to teach me. But how cool to say, "I live at Sage Living." By the way, that reminds me, in Minnesota, a home I'm familiar with, used to be called Perm Memorial Home. And they changed it to Perm Living. And then Perm Memorial Hospital became Perm Health. Notice the power of language. I love it. How about you? "So your nursing home must treat each resident with respect and dignity." Yes. "And care for each resident in a manner and an environment that promotes maintenance or enhancement of his or her quality of life." There it is, quality of life. I want to talk more about that or am I? Oh boy, I got to tell you something about this guys. I believe that part of the problem is that nobody is tending to the quality of life regs. Now please, nobody misunderstand. I don't mean to be rude, but think about it. Nursing regs go to nursing, activity regs go to activities, social services, dining, food and service, food and nutrition service, right? Who did the quality of life regs go to? See, we don't have a quality of life traditional department or team. And so yesterday, I've encouraged the social service folks and your activity folks to consider becoming a quality of life team together. And, and, and not just them, it needs to be all of us, right? Talking about life more than care. So there's another example of it. And then look at this, "Recognizing each resident's individuality." That is so strong. Bring that up a lot. We're supposed to identify this person's individuality. This person's different than the next. Then we have another strong new reg. This is new everyone. It says that your nursing home must protect and promote the rights of the resident. And I'm sorry if some of you heard me say this, but I really think it's true. You know, I've done a lot of work with regs. I've worked for CMS myself. I've studied regs and taught them my whole profession, okay? And the only reason I say that is that it's like I can hear something being said in between the lines. What do you think of this? It's sort of like what's being said there without being said is, "Hey, nursing homes, you've been really good at giving residents a list of their rights, really good at posting them in the hall." Yeah. And really good at reviewing one every resident council. But see, why would this be a new reg? See? Get better at protecting their rights and even promoting. So I challenge everyone of you listening, we all need to be advocates for the resident's rights for their own choice, even if they disagree with us or disagree with the doctor or disagree with the daughter. It's about them and their life and their living and their individuality and their quality of life, right? Who are we to restrict food when someone's 90 years old and wants to eat what they want to eat, for heaven's sake, right? Talk about quality of life. So protect and promote the rights. We should never have to run and get the social worker when it's a rights issue. That's silly. We all should advocate for resident rights. Isn't that beautiful? And then guess who else should be doing that? Family. "This is also new. The resident's wishes and preferences must be considered in the exercise of rights by the representative." That means the family rep or the guardian, whoever the representative is, okay? And so I love passing this on, something I figured out. I call it reframing the question. And even if there's a family member on the line, I'm challenging myself to be honest with you too. Or how about, how about me? Someday I'll be a family member perhaps to someone living in a nursing home. And it needs to be about the person living there and what they want, not what the family wants. So, so team members listening, don't ever ask a family member, "What do you want?" Ask them, "What would your mom want?" "What has your mom said she wants?" "How has your mom lived with her MS her whole life?" "Lived with her diabetes," whatever it is, okay? Just reframe it. Help everyone to reframe onto the person. All right, then we have this beautiful resident right to choose activities, schedules, including sleeping and waking times, healthcare and providers of healthcare services consistent with their interests, their assessments and plan of care. So the right to choose, let's just pull out schedules right here. The right to choose their own schedule. There it is everyone. Why don't we know this? We should know this by heart. Tag 561, "I challenge you to learn it by heart and say it often," okay? And then there's the including sleeping and waking times. That sounds good, but to be honest, it could have been much stronger. And what I recommend is don't walk around and ask people, "Hey, excuse me, what time would you like to get up? All right, Cindy, what time would you like to get up? Jordan, what time would you like to get up?" No, even though that looks like choice, when it comes to sleep, true choice is you get to decide. Your body decides when to wake up. That's what we all need to move towards, natural awakening. Even if someone says, "Wake me up at six in the morning," and if someone really did, of course, do that, right? Of course, but could it be they had a bad night of sleep? So I think what's more important is to teach everyone what is health. Health is sleep. Your body rejuvenates. My gosh, you're more healthy when you're well-rested. People fall less often everyone, when you're well-rested. So reframe it to we honor sleep. And there's a webinar coming up on that on the last Tuesday, a conference session. Please come. And then the right to make choices about aspects of his or her life that are significant to them. What's significant to you guys? Someone tell me in the chat box. I'd love to see. What would be significant to you that you want to make a choice about? I know what it would be for me. And then I haven't showed this on any of our sessions yet, but staying right here under guidance. Look at this. "Residents have the right to choose healthcare schedules consistent with their interests and preferences and information should be gathered to proactively assist residents with the fulfillment of their choices." I love that word proactive. It's become my best friend. A lot of these culture change practices represent being more proactive with people. That's how you prevent problems. I teach a 12-month curriculum called proactive practices to prevent falls. There's a lot of things we all can be doing to prevent falls proactively. And then it says, "You must not develop a schedule for care such as waking or bathing for staff convenience and without the input of residents." Are you kidding me? Have you all done that? Make sure to clip that out too and share it with your team. Just want to also teach and remind you that this term highest practicable level of wellbeing is all over the regs. It's almost in every reg. But the strongest place is right here at 655 Comprehensive Person-Centered Care Planning. Check this out. "The care plan must describe the following. The services that are to be furnished to attain or maintain the resident's highest practicable physical, mental... The resident's highest practicable, physical, mental, and psychosocial wellbeing. And I want to teach you something, there's a word inside the word practicable. It doesn't really flow off the tongue, watch yourself, it's not practical, which we're very used to saying and sadly doing. And look at what the regs say, your nursing home is supposed to help each person reach their highest practicable, what they're able to do. So whatever they're innately capable of, if they can walk, they should be walking, even if it takes a longer time, see? We tend to jump to, oh, that's not practical, not supposed to do that. In some of the other sessions, if you'd like to catch the recording for residents and family members. I interviewed John who lives in a nursing home, and we talk about physical, mental, and psychosocial wellbeing. And I, and I need you all to realize, these are typically not care plans like they're supposed to be. And, and they're hard to talk about, you got to kind of help each other understand what it means. And more importantly, what it means to the person. And here's a new video I want to show you, this is an example of highest practicable level of wellbeing. This woman moved out of the nursing home and into the very first Greenhouse Project nursing home. We have Greenhouse on the line, the new one's coming, I forgot the town, sorry. But look at what happens to Mildred Adams on the day she moves out of the typical institutional nursing home and into a home.
The other great memory I have from that day is Mildred Adams, who was an elder who lived there in the Tupelo Greenhouse. And her story was so dramatic, she had totally shut down in the traditional nursing home. She hadn't spoken in like a year. She was just basically vegetating, and they thought that was just part of her cognitive loss. They took her to the greenhouse, she literally woke up and looked around, she started. Her daughter-in-law started to give her the pureed food off the spoon, because that's all she'd eaten. She took the spoon and basic, I think she's, I don't know if she started talking then, she started feeding herself. Her daughter-in-law said, would you like a cup of coffee? And she said, yes, with a spoonful of sugar. This is somebody who hadn't spoken in like a year. She was there when I went to visit, and she asked me if I would like her to sing me a song. And I said, I would love that. And she asked what, you know, like make a request, what do you want to hear? And I said, well, whatever you want to sing. And she sang Amazing Grace, and it was amazing. It was truly, I will never forget that moment.
So everyone, there's a longer, there's a longer video if you want to watch it, just look up Greenhouses, Mildred Adams, you'll find it. And I love it, even though you may not have a greenhouse, everyone, please don't dismiss this. What I've learned is that there's power in the institution to shut people down. And we have to be aware of that and pride it. And there's power in creating homes. So keep moving that pendulum towards creating homes, whether you have a small house or a large nursing home. And then another couple examples that might interest you. When, when I was a surveyor years ago, I met a man named Lucky during the initial tour. And I, you know, you ask people, how's the food here? How's the care, do you get what you need? How are the activities? And Lucky says, what activities? And I knew there were lots of them, they even had a child daycare center on site. And he ended up saying, I am an electrician. And so I want you to see highest practicable, what if his, his care plan should have said something like, I consult with the maintenance team on electrical issues. I also watched a sample resident for three days, she had her hands flat and she's always cleaning. So guess what? I first thought, just give her a cloth, right? That's at least better than your hand. But I also realized that that's sort of just pacifying, it's like, here, have a cloth, I'm busy. You know, in a way, it's like pacifying the interest. And what challenged me to think that was, guess who came onto the neighborhood? We don't use the word unit, by the way, the neighborhood where people tend to live at 10:30 every morning. Guess who came into the neighborhood like clockwork? Housekeeping, and I realized, wow, what if Nora went with the housekeeper every day at 10:30? I clean with the housekeeper every day at 10:30. And I used to say, you know, with the supervision, you could use chemicals, but, you know, and dust on the cloth. But now we even have the microfiber cloth, makes it even better. And then for the sake of dining, you know, this could be someone's highest practicable level of wellbeing. That they set the tables before meals, or they fold the dining, the linen napkins. They, they clear the table after meals. All right, moving on to some more regs. I want you to see that the word preferences has shown up all over the regs. In fact, I'm sorry, I don't have it on a slide, but I think I've done a word count where preferences now shows up 200-plus times in the reg. So your nursing home must provide each resident with a nourishing, palatable, well-balanced diet. Meeting their daily nutritional and special dietary needs, taking into consideration the preferences of each resident. And then I want to show you also, it, it says that you need to have ongoing communication and coordination among and between staff within all departments. Old word, but notice communication is key to really know people's preferences. And then it also says reasonable efforts to accommodate these choices and preferences must be addressed by staff. And actually, right above there, everyone, it does say while it may be challenging to meet every resident's individual preferences. Incorporating their preferences and needs will ensure residents are offered meaningful choices and meals that are nutritionally adequate and satisfying. So it's sort of like they understand it could be challenging, but they also say there should be reasonable efforts to accommodate. And then hopefully you were with us on Tuesday, if not, go watch the session by Suzanne Queering. And she gives 10 big ideas on how to have better resident-directed dining. And guess what? She is the inventor of what is called the Suzie Q hot cart. So you can see it in the photo there. And it actually comes to the table, only one or two trained dining team members use it, it's not like a buffet. And you have the ability to, there's usually a show plate of food, you can show the food and people can really make a choice. And it's hotter, and it's faster, and it's more flexible, and you save a lot of money because you're not wasting so much food. Oh, it's so good. And here's my favorite thing ever, she showed this for those of you that were with us. One day, a person said, you know, I'm just hungry for some mashed potatoes and lots of gravy, please. And with something like this, everyone, you are empowered, you have power to actually give the person what they want. And hopefully you do that anyway, even if you got to walk back to the kitchen. Something else, if you don't know this, in the reg that's new, a member of your dining team must participate in the interdisciplinary team. So if that hadn't been happening with care planning, it's supposed to. Also, some new language regarding menus. Menus must reflect religious, cultural, ethical, ethnic needs of the resident population. As well as input from residents and resident groups. I don't know if you knew that. And my favorite change in the reg says this, nothing in this paragraph should be construed to limit the resident's right to make personal dietary choices. Isn't that good? And again, I sort of feel like I see something that's not there. I have heard of the deficiencies, you know, no offense, surveyors who might be on the line, I was one too. But sometimes, you know, let's say milk is on the menu, and somebody wasn't given milk, and it ends up being deficient. Well, I hate to say, sometimes, nobody asks the resident, so always make sure you double check with the person. I don't drink milk, so even if it was on the menu, I wouldn't be wanting it. And I feel like that's why this got added. They have the right to make personal choices, no matter what's on the menu. And then we also have some new language accommodating allergies and colic, and there's preferences again. Appealing options of similar nutritive value to residents who choose not to eat food that is initially served. There's a waste of money sadly, or who request a different meal choice. And then preferences shows up again for fluids. If you didn't know this big change, it also, um, hmm. You know what, I think I thought that was a different slide, let me, let me tell you something that's not there, guys. The regs used to say residents must receive therapeutic diets, like when they're ordered. And the language changed to be offered, because see, that's the point, you offer things, you can't make people do things. And if you didn't know, a physician can delegate to a registered or licensed dietitian. And then this often comes up when we talk about choices in dining, especially with open dining. And I should have put this slide after the open dining slide. Darn, so the open dining slide is coming up. And people bring up, hey, wait, we can't do that because we have to have the 14 hours. So I want to show you something here. The number two on the slide says, it brings up the 14 hours, okay? And I, I don't want you to see how it's too bad, we all didn't learn it as the 16-hour rule. Watch this, there must be no more than 14 hours between a substantial evening meal and breakfast the following day. Except when, same sentence, a nourishing snack is served at bedtime, which you all do. Up to 16 hours may elapse between a substantial evening meal and breakfast the following day. If a resident group agrees to this meal span, which I have a feeling they would, although it's up to them. But here's the better news, everybody, if you think of the open dining times, like a two-hour dining window for supper, let's say. And now think of the end of that to the beginning of an open dining for breakfast. You will always be within 14 hours in the in-between time. And please note, you will now be more compliant with all those regs we just looked at to offer choice. About things that are significant to people, right? Choice in schedules. So we, we tend not to talk about choice, that's a regulation, there's several regs I just went through. And there, there's more regs about choice than about this one sentence that brings up both 14 and 16 hours. Suitable nourishing alternative meals and snacks must be provided to residents who want to eat at non-traditional times. Or outside of scheduled meal service times. And this is how like open dining starts to meet more and more people's preferences as you can. And then I wanted to show you, if you didn't know, all this talk about preferences somehow landed in the definition of immediate jeopardy at nutrition. Look at this, dietary restrictions or downgraded diet textures such as mechanical softer pureed textures were provided by the facility against the resident's expressed preferences, whoa! And resulted in substantial and ongoing decline in food intake, resulting in significant or severe unplanned weight loss. With accompanying irreversible functional decline to the point where the resident was placed on hospice. That is an example that the person's preferences were not met and there was decline. And then get, guess what? It also shows up under actual harm. Failure to assess relative risks and benefits of restricting or downgrading diet and food consistency. Or to accommodate a resident's choice to accept the related risks resulting in declining food and fluid intake and significant weight loss. So accommodating choice is in there. And here comes preferences again, the failure to accommodate documented resident's food dislikes and preferences resulted in poor food and fluid intake and a decline in function. So yes, it also includes decline, but it's interesting to me how preferences showed up in immediate jeopardy as well as actual harm. Here's the slide on open dining. It's some sort of like, in the, in our movement, a two-hour window is sort of the common practice. If, if you can someday shoot for that, some places do even better than that. Some places actually offer 24-hour dining. And yes, and even small nursing homes. I've just heard administrators say things like this, ready? You know what, it's their home, it's their kitchen, it's their food. If they're hungry, we're going to get them something. So something to shoot for perhaps, and what do I want to add here? Remember, choices is met better than ever before, and there's less rush in the morning. CNAs do not have to get everyone, everyone hurry, hurry to the dining room at the same time, which is ridiculous. Because not everyone can be served anyway. And so the resident experiences hurry up and wait, and they fall asleep at the table, which by the way, is unsafe. We do a lot of things and don't do a lot of things when they're unsafe. It's very unsafe to have someone try to eat when they're sleeping. And the CNAs do not have the time they wish for to help people really get ready for the day. So now things can be much more relaxed, people can get their lipstick on and their teeth brushed, et cetera. It's so good. All right, and then the new dining practice standards are mentioned by CMS in the new regs. And, and Suzanne Queering also brought them up. And I, I was very involved, I was the facilitator for the task force that put them together. And so I happen to know a lot about them, and I want to tell you a little bit about them today. But Wyoming, if you would like more training on these, I've realized it's something we could do in the next year of this project, so let me know. And I want to bring up again, real foods first. So this became a standard of practice that we offer real foods first. And look who we learned it from, okay? Amda is the American Medical Directors Association, okay? Physicians talking, look at this. In their clinical practice guideline for alteration in nutrition. It says, provide foods of a consistency and texture that allow comfortable chewing and swallowing. A resident who has difficulty swallowing may reject pureed or artificially thickened foods. But may eat foods that are naturally of a pureed consistency, such as mashed potatoes, pudding, yogurt. Finely chopped foods may retain their flavor and be equally well-handled. This is the doctors talking, everybody. So think about it, a regular breast of chicken finely chopped. You know, would you rather have that or pureed chicken? Ground chicken, you know? It's a win-win, the, the baked chicken breast tends to be more moist, people are going to want it and eat it. It's going to taste yummy. When we grind stuff, it gets drier, why do you think we put all the gravy on it? And people want real food over ground, not real food. And then I learned from these guys that there are a lot more foods out there that are naturally of a pureed consistency that we never talk about. Flan is on the picture there, think guacamole, refried beans, soufflés, bisque soups. If we can do applesauce, we can do anything sauce. If we can do, what's it called now, rice cauliflower, maybe? We can do, you know, softer vegetables as well. I don't have the, the adequate time, but I want you to start hearing about this. Hummus. I've even heard creative teams realize things like if you put milk in a bowl of cold cereal, it turns to mush. In a certain amount of time, and now it would be of the pureed consistency. Think about this, everyone, when you put toast in your mouth, what happens to the toast? It instantly turns to mush. And then there's other ways to thicken things that might be more, you know, yummy. And always go with your speech therapist on this, but by the way, I'm doing a session for therapists. And I'm going to talk about all this with them as well. We don't really have time to go into language, I wish we did, but we do have a recorded webinar about language. And here's some words in this handout if you want to take it further. And, and I have a language handout, if anyone would like it, just email me. And now I just want to remind you what's happening in your state, and then I'll take questions. We do have a coalition, and if you want to be more of a part of it, we have a steering committee. To be honest, we probably have enough people on the steering committee, but if you want to be on it, you're welcome to. Our, our, our goal is to bring culture change to your state. And, and our, we have some big goals, like to boldly go where no state has gone before, to become places where people want to live and work, to have the best quality of life and quality of care. There's lots of information at this website, if you just type in Wyoming Culture Change Coalition, it'll come up. We want to thank Mountain Pacific, they host it for us, okay? And part of this grant is also working with five nursing homes every year in Wyoming. And that first year is coming to an end this month. And we want to thank Star Valley and South Lincoln and Granite, they've been in the project the full year, they've made a lot of culture change happen. And, and then we have two homes that joined midway, we want to thank Life Care Center of Casper and Wyoming Retirement, they're on the line. And they're going to share what they already have happening, just part of a year. And then I'm looking for three more nursing homes to join. So what that means is you would commit to watching the monthly education, these webinars that anyone can watch, excuse me. But you also commit to just a one-hour coaching call. But you also commit to just a one-hour coaching call and you, and you commit to implementing at least three practices, if not more. And everybody ended up doing more, it tends to come naturally. We use the Artifacts of Culture Change Tool, which we'll tell you all about. And just want to remind you, here comes our other sessions next week on Tuesday. Lacey Corneliusson is gonna share on staff engagement and how to, you know, ideas on valuing team members, so we don't lose them. And then next week, the special sessions are for therapies, nursing, and environmental services. And also, our two big audacious goals, we've been calling them for your state, is that every person who works in a Wyoming nursing home learns about culture change. So we could really use your help there. If you could get this kind of thing in front of everybody, that there's a recording each time, Mountain Pacific houses them all. And it's our goal that anyone living in a Wyoming nursing home does not get woken up. So you could also help with that. There's all the webinars. And I will just give you these takeaways, what if your dining team really took the lead on making sure choice is given and honored of when to eat, what to eat, in an amount I'm hungry for? What if your team started talking about highest practicable, physical, mental, and psychosocial wellbeing? And that, that includes being able to feed myself, you saw Mildred Adams. If someone can feed themselves, even if it takes longer, they should be. You could be a voice for real food, there's a way to save money there. To learning people's preferences and honoring them, maybe to looking into the hot food cart. And, and almost everything we talked about there is in the regulations, so. Done, I'd like to hear what you all have to say or ask about. Okie dokie. Oh wow, so the Living Center did change to Sage Living, thank you. Thank you, Michelle, that is good. And will I continue to send emails? Yes, if you've been getting emails from me, you'll, you'll get more, Catherine. And yes, there was a handout, everyone. I posted it in the chat box, if you want to look in there, double check. But some people are telling me it might be too big and therefore, like you might not even see it there. Or be able to download it, so if you need it, email me or, you know, pretty soon, give it a few days, it'll be up on the Mountain Pacific website, the recording as well as the handout. So what do you want to know more about? Somebody ask a question, would you please? And, or raise your hand, do I say hands? And feel free to unmute yourselves, what do you think? What do you think, Mary and Max and Margarita? What do you guys think? Mike, what do you think? Who's gonna do something different?
I'm curious, this is Cindy from the Legacy, and I'm curious if anyone on the call has, you know, with the new regulations that came out yesterday, the memo update for visitation, if they're going to be able to encourage, you know, families, guest trays again, and having guests eat in the dining room with their loved ones.
Good job, Cindy. I am sorry, it's not my expertise, I admit, I haven't been keeping up with all that. Can anyone else speak to that? Does anyone feel like you can serve food to visitors yet? Cindy, have you read the new guidance? What, what does it say about it?
I, you know, it just says that when visitors are around other residents that they should, you know, be wearing masks or social distancing. So I, I feel like the new visitation memo will support that.
Will support what?
Sorry, hi.
Yeah. Will support, just finish that please Cindy and then go ahead.
I think, I think it will support allowing us to serve visitors in the dining room to eat with their loved ones.
Okay, and now go ahead.
Hi, we've had a little meeting with the Department of Health this week and, you know, the fun one. And they said that's fine as long as they're not around other residents. If you have like a corner, so they're away and you maintain social distancing, just so they're not mingling with other people.
Okay, great.
Part of it is when they come and go, they want to stop and say hi to people and stuff like. But it was perfectly fine.
Go ahead, oh, thank you so much, that is good news, everyone. Oh, hallelujah, good news for once. All right, someone else?
We have been allowing our families to come in and sit down in their rooms with their, with their family members and have lunch and we provide that for them and it makes a big difference.
Oh, beautiful, thanks Pam. That is Star Valley talking. Big difference, yep. It's what people do, they eat together, don't they? On that note, everyone, this didn't come up today, but a neat culture change practice is for you all to go sit down and dine with residents as you feel comfortable. It's been a thing in the institution where we frowned upon that, you know, I've even seen a sign years ago. It depressed me. As a surveyor, I see a sign in the dining room that actually says, staff may not eat with residents in the dining room. And it teared me up because I, I learned, I was learning about culture change, right? What's normal? Look what we just said, it's normal to dine together, eat together. And it's tended to be like an unwritten rule and there it was, like bam, written on the wall. And it's just an example of how mixed up things can get in the institution. So for what it's worth, if you've never done that, consider it. There are so many good stories when, when team members choose to eat their lunch with residents. There was an administrator in Colorado that did it every day. And she would move table to table and you know what she would always say? Her line was, I know what goes on in my building. Isn't that great? I have another cool story where I coached a team, just like right, right now, just like this, and the next day, it happened to be the activity director, she's just sat down and ate lunch with the table of residents. And two things happened, another table got mad and they're, they're like, hey, if you sit with her today, you better come sit with us tomorrow. And they actually noticed that residents didn't eat as much. And please don't take that as bad because they realized they were talking more. And it makes you wonder, what are older people really hungry for? You know what, they get food, they get a lot of food. They get food all day long. What do they not get? You, people, connection, relationship, friendship, right? So thank you Cindy for bringing that up, thank you Pam for sharing. And everyone else who shared, any other questions?
I did want to Carmen, just share something, we do have planned for next week. Because we want to start eating together with the residents, we planned an international dinner. So for Ireland, Ireland, we are going Irish, you know, St. Patrick's, we're having an Irish dinner with Irish shepherd's pie and bread and an Irish dessert and, and all of our, you know, our DON and our assistant DON and administrator, everybody's coming in to eat with the residents. So we're really excited about that.
Beautiful, thank you Pam, that is so fitting for this particular session. And right at the end, happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. Anybody else, anything? Here's a chance, Wyoming, questions, comments? All right, I'm gonna let you go then, thank you so much. Oh, comment, thank you Carmen, good, thanks for coming, thanks everybody, this is so great, see you next time.